Yeah.
My main is beautiful.
The United States of America. Do the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the most.
Well, coffee. Danny David here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Carol's well, see here Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Here's.
Yes.
Any additions, guys, or corrections to the agenda?
Oh, let me look at it.
Item three, we got public comment. If you want to add anything, let me know. Is there any public guys in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Just um.
Oh, somebody else is joining us.
Item four, we got our discussion review project list. Tim.
We just took a couple of ones now on the iPads. I did add this afternoon. The aggregate list that you have in front of you and hard copies. Uh, there was also a memorandum submitted by the sheriff's office for uh parking lot repairs. I'm not sure if that was intended for discussion tonight or not. So just for uh sake of argument, it's on here and it was uh about sixty-four thousand dollar um. Project to do the entire parking lot. This originally started out with just the drain on a west side. Um, and that um. You can see it's broken out in here. I forget if this is six or the eight thousand dollar. Chris has also secured another quote that's lower than those. So. We want to do the parking lot. Okay, but the bottom line is we do have to do the drain and let's. I I think we're going to get a quote that's going to be somewhere in the four thousand range. And if that's the case, that's something maybe we take care of at a regular meeting. And deal with the parking lot as a separate item. And then last thing that is added on here is uh an email I got today had the results of this uh close up the center of look for local. State and urban policy at U of M did a survey about all of our local governments in Michigan and. Uh utilized their ARPA spending. Uh, the interesting thing is um. A lot of the communities are actually doing exactly what we're doing, focusing on capital improvements. In fact, in our population group. Uh sixty-seven percent of the communities have been focusing on this sort of thing that we've already started with juvenile center and with the annex building. Uh, so it just was kind of heartening to see that uh. Uh, what we're doing is pretty similar with other communities are the funds. Uh, no communities or no, but very few communities have had um. Comprehensive plans that covered several years for for doing this. So it's again kind of tracking with the way we've uh progressed. Now, on the aggregate scores that you see, just they are put in order of um highest to lowest scored. Uh, the way the um surveys went, ones were the lowest priorities and threes were the highest. And so we did just simple math divided the. Uh, total score by the number of surveys that came back. And so you can see the breakdown here, and I would also point out that um. Three of these, three of the top five um really could, if you wanted to be rolled into a single one, uh, this is uh one that is for the county building uh. Efficiency improvements. The UV angel clean air, uh LED lights and the county building entrance repairs. I think we've talked about all those at times even as sort of a package. It's first two.
Three of those together.
With the first two, uh county building energy efficiency improvement and UV angel clean air. And then the fifth one down there, the county building entrance repairs. The first two in particular, um that can be tied together because the UV angel uh. Clean air system is truly the the LED lights, but they have um. The air filters are built into them too, so they circulate the air in uh various locations and we uh. I worked with Chris, we came up with twenty-five of those. We took the uh average area that's cleared by one of these filters. Uh, by the square footage of this building and came up with that twenty-five number. Um, I don't know if um. That would be something I would expect. It would be that consumers would would consider too if they came through and did their energy audit and. Kind of calculate that to make sure we didn't buy too many or too few if we wanted to go that route. I still haven't heard back from the consumers rep, but it's only been about ten days since he was uh given my contact information. Uh, so we'll just keep monitoring. If I haven't heard from him like tomorrow, maybe I give them a call and see if I can track him down. Otherwise, they're pretty well self-explanatory. So.
Who's your point of contact with that consumers?
I went with uh Rich Castle first and he referred me and I. Looked at the man's name and swore I'd remember it and I can't. Uh, but referred me to somebody specifically within the consumers organization that deals with municipalities and energy efficiency audits. And they literally will come through and look at all of our lighting, look at our our windows, uh, look at the insulation that we have. And give us a very good idea of, well, if nothing else, a shopping list of things we can do uh to improve on our energy.
The county building entrance repairs. Can you tell me, I I guess remind me exactly what that entailed?
Yeah, we were talking about the entrance. Um, few things. First of all, the doors are not ADA compatible. They don't have the button. Uh, and I don't think the width on them would meet the ADA standards that we have today. The concrete leading up to that door has just enough of a slope to it. Um, and I've actually witnessed this where we've had a couple of elderly people who. One, I just couldn't make it. An elderly man was pushing his wife in a wheelchair and could not make it that uh that slope. We also talked about an additional curb cap. So the truck that they use for buildings and grounds when it backs into the. Uh, door there at the uh their loading area at the boiler room, they don't have to jump the curb to do it. Uh, and run over grass. So taking that into account. And then we also talked about uh as part of this package, if you will, an improvement for where security sits. They have no protection whatsoever there right now. And there was discussion of putting up some kind of a. I don't know, mean screen, uh, you know, bulletproof glass or something that they could. Actually be behind when they're seated. And also looking at the possibility of a workstation there where they could monitor, we had cameras around the building, they could monitor. Uh, those cameras uh as well. So just kind of improving that and actually making it a, you know, some dirty station right there in the hallway. And now that we have that scanner out there, we definitely know what our. Dimensions need to be to accommodate for line of sight and and what have you. Think we had talked about a few other things just in that area too, but that's just in general, you know, proving that that entrance.
Where did the bathrooms fall on here? Um, remember we got a from Judge Williams.
We did. I would um, now I guess it's so focused on energy. I. Personally, my mind, I put that in terms of the entire building. So we're going to do energy improvements. We would do. Things like bathrooms as well, try to capture all that. And that's not to say you're going to want to do all of these things, but at least get you a list. And some pricing on all that so that you know what we're dealing with. And if we couldn't do it all, that perhaps as part of our capital improvements programming over the next few years, we try to knock some of those things out.
I I had some like the, I had some questions of some things that were on here. I I guess I didn't recall. So um. Corrections, transport, transportation fleet. What what exactly was that?
Cross that off. But that's the vehicle that we've already.
That's what I assumed. You had the clerk file cabinets is is was that supposed to still be on there? I didn't think so. Okay. Cause you got those correct?
No.
Oh. Sorry, Traver. Um, what are the questions? Cause you had upstairs the uh. Probe oh courtroom redesign and referee courtroom construction. I don't remember ever seeing that neither come to us, did it?
That was like one of the original uh group of projects. So on the iPads, if you go to that folder, I think it's in the folder with all those projects.
Did you guys have questions, comments, commissioners?
Yeah, I have some comments to make.
Go ahead.
Um, we had significant amount of of our money is my understanding and it seems like um. We have spent it mostly on. My opinion, how I see it. But mostly on wants and that needs. Uh, and I find that rather disturbing. Because some of these on here are pretty, pretty significant. Like this county building for efficiency. And the entrance repairs. You know, as far as the entrance goes, I would really like to see it. At the front entrance like it used to be and not not the rear entrance. Personal opinion. I don't, and we wouldn't have to do anything with the cement in the front because it's already accommodates uh handicap people. And you have all this cement work to do in the back. Um, and cement's not cheap, believe me. So does just my personal thoughts.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, can you explain a little bit what do you mean? Um, so far you've seen our funds. That you feel spent more on wants than needs.
Play the three quarter ton pickup for the sheriff's department. To pick up evidence. So. Not unless um. Our, 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 I can't imagine what they'd be picking up because they used to pick up evidence before and they had a trailer and they had a, they had a um. An SUV and they'd go pick up evidence. And now they need a four-wheeler I pick up. Uh, with a crew cab on it. And uh. And it was just supposed to be used for that, but I see it out on the road. I don't know. What kind of evidence they're collecting, but uh. I didn't see anything that couldn't be. Couldn't be handled in a in a Tahoe or an Explorer or something like that. So, you know, that was just a one. That's not, that was not a need. In my opinion, was not a need.
You're entitled to your opinion. Tim, is there an updated uh list on here of like what we've spent? I know we have had it. Where where's it at?
Our but. And commitments.
Where is it? The folder?
It's a whole, it's a.
My look. As a prioritization.
But I mean, that pickup, for example, yes. You get right down to it to probably more of a one, but we only spent twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars on, I mean, most of it.
What do you mean by that?
Arpa only spent twenty-seven. And who's and who? Hundred ninety dollars for, well, I was gonna get to that USDA. We got thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars from USDA grant for that.
All right.
You you sure on that? I know there was two vehicles.
Up there, three of them.
But I just want to make sure what you're saying is correct.
But I know there's over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars spent on the vehicles over there across the at the sheriff's department. At least that was the figure I saw.
There is a list, but I'm just trying to locate as far as how much money we had, what we spent it on. Where we're at. Can you, can you, do you know right where that's at, Tim?
And mine, I go across the top. It's the fourth one.
Across the top of.
Right. It says for ARPA expenditure.
On my, on my iPad here, it's like one, two, three, four, five, six, six line down. Right here.
Is it in a folder?
Right here.
Yeah, no.
Arpa expenditures and commitments.
Is that the name of the folder?
Yeah.
Resolutionally, I don't mean. No, I don't, I don't.
Most of the money has gone as, most of the money's been committed to. Well, half the money has been committed to uh.
There it is.
Where's it? Where did you find that again? Hang on.
Still lost revenue. We've applied fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two lost revenue already.
Okay, I don't, where is it, Tim, on here?
It's a twenty-three and twenty-four.
I want to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's day treatment facility. That's across the street. That was a, that was the um.
The courts, the probate courts.
Yeah, I know. It's the, it was the upgrade of that building to to be able to do use utilize what we wanted it for.
Yeah.
How much have we spent in lost revenue to this point in our funds?
A million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-three is committed.
And isn't twenty-twenty-four committed as well?
Twenty-four is reserved.
So there's another million dollars.
What's the, what's the sheriff's office Ford interceptor utility all wheel drive?
I think that's the truck you were talking about.
Right.
No, no, the Ford, the truck is above that. It said sheriff's office at one fifty.
That's it.
But that the F one fifty was not available at the time. We get the three-quarter ton instead.
The other one's animal control truck.
I know, and we didn't need a three-quarter ton truck for that either.
Well, I wish we would have known that you were going to get elected and we would have waited and spent the money after.
I wish you would have too.
Okay, keep going. So let's not get off track, guys.
No, I was, I'm just saying it was. The three-quarter ton vehicles are fine, but I I don't see him picking up an elephant with it.
Okay.
Just a thought.
This is all.
Doggies and kitties.
It is, it is. So let's move forward. We got one point two million dollars off.
So can I um? About some of the questions I have.
Please.
Um, and some of this we may need time for um. Like some of our server. And software upgrades. I mean, we all know in this day and age how important all that stuff is. I mean, are we way behind the ball like where where we're currently at with our? Our server software issue, you know? And then PC replacement. I just kind of was wanting some information on that because. That equipment is true important for us to be. Efficient and functional and. And then equalization GSI upgrades, we all.
I think we've done that.
We done that.
Actually went with uh.
I think we.
Into agreement with uh amalgam. They're actually doing what we were going to do uh with the equipment, which is. Way more efficient way for us to go.
Okay.
Didn't we do the prosecuting attorney service as well? Isn't that what she came to us for?
Yeah, it was a program.
For software. Software upgraded and where we left that was, I think we did do a. Yeah, down payment or something just to secure our spot in line, but uh with the twenty-four budget, we were going to incorporate. The balance of the cost, which I believe was somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars.
I mean, by looking at this, obviously the number one thing, like you said, the top, top three right there. I mean, that's going to be the remaining one point two million. With these renovations that you're talking about, the county building entrance repairs, accounting building energy. Efficiency improvements and the UV cleaner by looking at these possibility of these coming.
And how much do we have left?
One point two.
Question.
Yes.
Um, Tom's, Tom's listening and. If you just ask him, he will uh. Talk about that. Some of Charlie's questions.
Oh, Tom, go ahead. I can't hear you very well. Yep.
Um, I don't have the list in front.
You're coming, Tom, you're coming in and out. Hello? No, we can't hear you at all.
Tell me on the next one, Tom, and I'll put you on speaker.
So um. Can I speak again?
Yes.
Um, I would like. To have us here one more time, Karen on our.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, sorry. Um, it's never going, it's never going. The IT department has technical issues. Um, a lot of that stuff was done as capital improvements, not necessarily ARPA projects. When the capital improvement plan got developed, it was, that's when that schedule for my stuff came about. Uh, there is the prosecutor's office server on there. That was before we were talking about going with carpal. So that can definitely come off the list. The PC replacement cycle and the servers should be looked at in the next year or two, along with the switches if I had them on there.
Network switches are there.
You've got PC replacement twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, we're doing in increments, just like we did in eighteen, nineteen and twenty. But that was before our funds too.
Tom, roughly, what were we spending each one of those years?
Probably the servers alone were about forty-eight and. No, it was probably, no, it's thirteen, five and eight for the county building and the jail. So. Roughly twenty-one.
Per year.
That was while those servers are now five years old.
Right.
Um. Probably three to five years. Roughly lifespan on most of the technology equipment for the computers and the servers.
So it looks like like even according to those, so you're looking at a server for BSNA for twenty-twenty-six. You're 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 obviously trying to. Plan for this.
Yes, yes, this was all before ARPA too, like I said, so this is planned for the future of the capital.
Arpa money that wouldn't be paying for this, is that correct?
I'm not saying you wouldn't pay for it. I'm saying I developed what you have in front of you before ARPA funds came about.
Yes, this is a long-range plan that you already had prepared, but since ARPA came along. We're just saying you're applying to that. We were on track to buy all this stuff anyway.
Correct. The only thing that was different, I think you have in there. The phone server has already been done. That was something I was planning on doing in in this fiscal year, but it's already done.
Tom. Okay, go ahead.
Me, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Tom.
Um, the phone server that's in there, that's already been done.
The Cisco phone server twenty-twenty-six, twenty-six thousand?
Yep, that's already done.
How about the uh, what I just outside just on there, I thought was done. Um. The Cisco phone server. The server for the jail, has that been done?
No.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. There was one more thing I just seen on there that involved you. Hang on just a minute. I don't know where it went. Oh, equalization GIS upgrade.
That's been done. I don't know if there's any reoccurring costs with that, though, out of there.
We got a cost of seventy-five thousand.
Uh, that's, I'll be honest, that was Randy Booth handling that, but I don't know what the total bill was on it and I don't know what the reoccurring costs are.
Okay, that's fair.
That off, we address that last year with.
I thought so, okay.
Hey, Tom, I'm Charlie.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing over at the jail with the cameras? When I got a tour over there, um. Couple of people said that our cameras over there are getting pretty outdated. They appear to be getting pretty blurry.
They are. That was a project off the top of my head. That was, it went from a hundred and eighty thousand. To two hundred and five thousand, and now you do have information in your iPads tonight. It went to two hundred and eighteen thousand. To replace those cameras.
One hundred and eighteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
Those are sets?
Yes, so glad you're all sitting down. That does not include the wiring. We would have to contract that separate. Now, obviously, the camera vendor would work with a electrician to pull all the wire for the cameras. But that does not include wiring. He probably, I'll ballpark another thirty thousand on that.
You know, something to think about though, and we have. We have commissary funds. So we have commissary.
Right, right.
And that would be.
Perfect.
For the inmates. We're watching, watching them so they don't beat each other up, you know? So, you know, I mean, I think, I think what we're getting off a little bit because. A lot of this stuff was just planned events anyway, but when ARPA came along, we applied it to that. Because that would be a source of income.
Right, but I didn't know what what's on this list, what's outdated, what is not updated.
With the process.
Right.
Uh, I seen GPS on here, Tom, where? Where did I?
Fifty-eight, fifty-three, that's already, that was allocated for basically I I planned on a twelve-month period. Of fifty-eight thousand three hundred dollars. That's.
That's already been allocated, correct?
Yes.
Same today.
It's on your list of completed projects.
Well, completed. There it is, three, I've seen it on here too. Okay. Questions, other questions, guys?
Yeah, so what I was saying before we had Tom come back. I'd like Karen to talk with us again about our our negative cash flow issue. Um, and then I'd also like Tim's feedback on that. Tim's. Been in county business a long time and has experienced those other places. Um, county, you know, county operations running with negative cash flows.
Okay, come on up.
Hello everyone. Um, I had uh Tim. Load onto your iPads a letter that I addressed to the board and to Tim in regards to negative cash. For you can to consider during this ARPA discussion. And I wanted to remind the ones who are, who have been on the board and to bring to attention to the new commissioners on the board. That while it's legal for a county to operate with negative cash. You've had the auditor stand in this room and tell you it is not best practice. So I strongly encourage you to address this issue and. Again, it may be legally acceptable, but that's not fiscally responsible for this county to continue to operate in this fashion. And I certainly hope you make this a priority in your appropriation discussion. We also added, um, after we had discussion about this. Last summer, Tim did an article in the local newspaper before you were commissioner, some of you. So that is on your iPads as well for you to read the newspaper article. And then we recently had a training. From Mina Castarian about your fund balances. Tim has also added that onto your iPads for you to review and how important your fund balance is. We want to operate this county with good fiscal health in mind. And operating with negative cash is not fiscally responsible. It is not best practice and it's time for this county to make a change in the right direction.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
This negative cash flow that we've had, this, after we got the ARPA money, that was brought up then about negative cash flow, right? So it seems like if that was so important, and it is important, and I understand that. But um. If it was that important and then it seems like, like I said before, well, personal opinion. We spent money on wants and not, not, not needs, and this was definitely a need.
Definitely.
And there were some things that were purchased. That were just nice to have once.
Brenda, I literally stood at that podium and begged for this to be addressed. I literally used those words. I beg you to address this.
You mean before I came on board then and before Mr. Mayhew came on board and before Mr.
For the prior.
Once he came, yeah.
Yes.
So this really should have been. Yes, as.
A number one priority.
Should have been number one priority.
In my opinion, yes. But I don't get to make those decisions. That's why I keep coming back and begging you to please address this problem. It's been on our books for a decade.
And I, and I, and I under, and I understand, believe me, I do, and I, and I wish it, it would have been addressed. As as a priority need. This is priority want.
This is a priority need and you still have funding to address this issue.
And I understand that, but we also have some other priorities. Um. You know, that I consider significant priorities too, and I know you consider yours. And I consider yours a priority too. But it's like now we're down to the end where there's not a lot of. Money left.
True. And I don't consider this my problem. This is our problem.
I understand that.
This is our problem to deal with. And and if you take a look at what your balance is. And take this half a million off, you still have nearly seven hundred thousand dollars to make changes and improvements to your building and make it more efficient.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to you. Are you completed? We.
No, I'm not.
Go ahead.
Okay, just one more item. Be before we can. Um, I would like to know what the cost of upgrading this building would be as far as. With uh lighting efficiency. And. We haven't, we haven't stepped forward in that. We haven't got anybody from consumers here and evidently Tim's. We're on, but I have no idea what that's going to cost. You know, and they say we have enough money for that. It's like, I don't know, do we? You you see what I'm saying? And I understand.
I understand you're here to prioritize. I'm just asking you to make the fiscal health of this county your number one priority. How do you, how can you make financial decisions when you're operating with negative cash? I'm sure none of you operate your own checkbooks or households this way. Why are we running the county this way?
We, we did contribute five hundred thousand dollars over a four-year period. So you can't say to the budget. So you can't say we didn't, five hundred thousand dollars per year over four years. We did set aside to help balance our budget.
But that's two different things.
Understandable, that's cash flow. Understandable, but I was adding to her comment.
Yeah, why didn't we take that? Put it against the cash flow instead of budget. I I guess I am really.
Two different, two different topics. You have your budget that says this is what we're going to spend for the year. This is how we're going to pay for it. Cash flow is how you pay for the things that you're purchasing.
Right.
And as of the end of May. Your cash flow, if you were paying all of your general fund bills out of one bank account without the other special fund monies to support it. Your bank account for general fund would be overdrawn four million dollars every single day. Until your tax money starts coming in and then you'll have ebbs and flows of cash. But if you don't address that negative cash, you're going to continue to operate. With other special fund money supporting your general fund bills.
And I know the special fund money has been doing that over several years.
But let's think about it for a minute. What if all of a sudden the childcare fund, which is substantial, the state decides to start cutting programs. And starts eliminating money for that special fund. Now you're not going to have. Now you're not going to have funding to offset your negative one-on-one cash, and that could happen in every one of those special funds that operate on millages and grant funding and federal funding. How long before our, our government funding flow depletes, and then you're stuck with a overdrawn general fund to operate with nothing to support the offset? I can't give you a timeline and when that could happen. I wish I could draw you a line in the sand and say twenty twenty seven, you are in dire straits. You're already in dire straits because we're operating and paying general fund bills without money to support it. You're only flush because special funds offset that in the pooled cash that we have. Does everyone understand what I'm, what I'm saying? You understand how that operates? I know you do. Do you understand how that operates? When I give you your monthly cash summary report, do you look at that and see that general fund? I highlight for you that negative. All of those other funds are special funds dedicated for specific purposes, restricted for other purposes. The only reason your bank account isn't overdrawn is because all of those restricted funds, those balances are offset in your negative for general fund. If we were to open a separate bank account and pay just your general fund bills out of one bank account, it would be overdrawn for a million dollars.
So how is the five hundred and twenty-five thousand gonna get rid of that four million dollars?
Because of your ebbs and flows of your income from tax mileage monies. So in July, the bills go out. Right? Your, your tax bills go out. People start paying that, the money funnels into the county because your summer bill is their state education tax and your county mileage, county operating. So that money starts rolling in, and then you have the winter bill where you, all of your other special elected millages.
Right.
That money flows into the county for MSU and Rhode and Coa and what have you. That generation of income coming in will soften that general fund negative throughout the year as you're paying bills and resources are coming in. That five hundred thousand or five hundred and twenty-five thousand is the balance as of September thirtieth. If you were just looking at a snapshot of one day. Which is what your audit does, one day in the year to report to the public. We were in the negative nearly five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which you cannot report to the state of Michigan in your audit. Do you understand that?
You do.
Mr. Mayhew, Brenda, do you understand that cannot be reported to the So we are operating this county in a way that cannot be legally reported to the state, so we have to post journal entries to reverse that negative cash on our books and make it a positive to show the public and the state that we are in a positive position for cash at year end. And then on October first, the auditors instruct me to reverse that journal entry, and we keep operating in a way that can't be reported. That's not fiscally responsible. It might be legal.
Right.
But it's not fiscally healthy. It's not how you should be running a business.
This isn't something that just happened since you got elected. They instructed, you know, past treasurer do the same thing.
Correct, correct. For at least a decade, that's how this county has operated.
What, what created it? I mean, was it because when the taxes were, uh, we collected the taxes? Was it, were the changes made? Were there?
Part of it may be to blame of the state shifting.
And how much did they?
I wasn't the treasurer then. I get to work in the office then, so I can't speak to that, Brenda.
But I would, I would like to know. I'd just like to know, uh, because I'm sure that was the initiation of the I'm not sure. I, I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking he's not knowing. Uh, that's probably how this negative cash flow started, but it's because of that change.
And then combined with overspending over the years, I'm sure it just compounded the problem.
But, um, I, I look at this and I, I don't foresee, um, any reduction of it, the excess spending that we're doing. I, I, I don't, I don't see it. So would that put us back in a negative cash flow again? We don't watch our spending?
Absolutely. Overspending is going to put you in the negative, no matter what you do.
Right, so.
But I don't want you to turn a blind eye on the problem.
That, that, that's a problem. I, I realize. One of the problems we've had in, in the past is we overbudgeted, okay, the plan. You know how, you know how it used to be without a central person
Yes.
overseeing everything. The word went out to every department, give us a budget, just submit a budget.
I remember those.
Okay, and departments would just submit inflated budgets. And then an office would put them all together, and that was our budget, and it was more money than we were going to bring in. So they just said, oh, no problem. We got the tax revolving fund, so.
Or raise the ticket revenue.
Right.
Another answer.
Right, and yeah. We're just gonna, we're just gonna use this to say that we did it. The redeeming factor was we didn't spend all the budget. There was departments that gave us an inflated budget October one or September, preparing for October one. And then when you got to the end of the year, they didn't even spend all their budget.
That's right.
But they overspent some of it, and, and we ended up using money from special funds. It's not that we didn't have the money, it's just special fund money. It's, it's, it's just like, we overspent our checkbook at home. And to make up for it, we went over to the mattress and lifted the mattress up and grabbed the cash out that we had hidden in, in there, or the vacation fund. We went over there and we used that to pay for it. And when it was all said and done, nobody was going to repossess, repossess anything because we had the money. It's just different funds. And then the county, it's thirty times that. There's just so many special funds and so many different pockets of money and things like that. You just, it's not black and white. It's not just so simple that you just explain it in three sentences.
Yeah, and
So many facets to it.
Hold on just a second. I, I, I appreciate what you're saying. Um, my, my opinion on this, for one, we, we did set aside to help balance this money. Was meant for revenue lost during COVID. That's why this county got, uh, received this money. Um, I don't, I, I, so what we did initially was, was set aside five hundred thousand dollars over a four-year period to help help balance the budget. Um, I don't think that's solving the problem. I think that would be a, a quick fix. Um, but after looking at what we've seen last week at, at the budget and where certain departments are, are standing. Um, even if this was to happen now, I don't foresee that solving a long-term problem. I, I think this money was meant to be spent, um, for improvements, for revenue loss. Um, and I, I, I don't feel like, I, I feel like this problem has been a longevity problem.
Which is why I'm asking for someone to address it now. Let's put, you have to build a wall with bricks. You have to start with one brick at a time.
That's my opinion, especially after looking at, at what I seen last week and the percentages and where we're at in the year and, um.
I think anytime you can make a, a step in the right direction towards solving a problem, maybe it doesn't fix the whole problem, but it's a step in the right direction. You should take that step in the right direction. Is my opinion.
A- and I agree with that, but also included in that step in the right direction is our people who work in this county. Um, also, look at what they're, what they're spending, and if they don't, and they keep spending the way they're spending. After, after it comes, we have positive cash flow, the following year it'd be negative again. Because they just spend, 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 spend. Look at all the overtime that's being done, and I think a lot of it, uh, some of it is, is mismanagement of personnel and how they schedule them for their time. And I'm not, I'm not you know, one. That's how I feel, and I just think it will, it will always, it will never correct itself because there doesn't seem to be any, there doesn't seem to be any, um, emerge, emergency or, or stress about in some departments to watch, watch their spending, and I don't think they are. I mean, there, there, there has to be other options besides paying a lot of overtime in managing your people. Um, that I like to manage them one time, see how that works.
Do you have a comment, Commissioner Mayhew, or an opinion?
I believe you gotta work your way out of it. You can't just bury yourself out with money because it's not going to be there the next time. You don't work your way out. You'll never know how you got there.
Commissioner Scott?
I think to, to answer, uh, Brenda's thing is then we need to really get aggressive with this next year's budget.
I agree with that.
We need to go right in.
Yeah.
We need to go right in and surgically remove a lot of these lines and, and hold, hold them, hold those departments right their feet to the fire. When they come in and say, I need a budget adjustment because our overtime went, you say, no. We just say, no, we're not going to do that. Him, uh.
Usually what happens, they do the overtime and then they want us to pay.
Tim, do we?
Valley.
Is that a, uh, is that a reasonable
Method? The short answer is yes, that's a reasonable approach. The hard part is going to be, well, what if they don't do that? Um, and there are provisions within the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act that if we're not going to get that level of cooperation, you're going to keep spending. We're going to have to implement whatever MCL number that is, the consequences for that. You know, the attorney general pays a visit, and it gets pretty serious at that point. Now, that does not get us off the hook for the excess spending. But it does give pause, I would hope, to any budget administrator who causes that to happen, and it doesn't matter if it's for overtime. A vehicle purchase, whatever it might be, there's a consequence that comes down the pike now, or, um, things like, um, the overtime. So we're going to do our third quarter budget adjustments here, uh, in July. We're due to do that. So we see that somebody has gone over again. We will level that out. The message has to be made very clear. No more. You can't do it anymore. In literally any board meeting, write up a resolution if we have to. You're on notice. You can't spend that anymore. It's illegal for you to spend that from this point forward. Now, again, the enforcement is, is a bit iffy. I can't recall a county that's ever had to take on a department uh, in, in, to try to enforce that. So what's the next thing we do? It's kind of nice that we're in the third quarter because we're also working on the twenty-four budget. And if we don't have confidence that you're going to be able to keep your budget under control, then we're going to have to make some draconian reductions for you. Just to safeguard the financial solvency of the county. But what you said is absolutely right. This is where we're going to have to buckle down and make that happen. I'm happy to research what those consequences are. I mean, they're written in the statute, but like I said, I don't know that anybody's ever had to go in and enforce those. But it's not an option, uh, for even the attorney general. It said, attorney general shall
Yeah.
Take the action.
That's the number side of it. But on the board side of it, they're going to come in here, they're going to be screaming. Okay, you're going to have people screaming at you that Chicken Little's going to be falling out of the sky. I'm just preparing you.
Chicken Little's going to have a hard bud.
Well, all I'm saying is, is, is they're, they're, they'll, they'll be lobbying you, they'll, whatever. I mean, we're doing this, we're trying to do this without cutting any people, okay? All right, I, I am. I, I would, I would like to cut back and not cut any people.
I agree.
But, you know, of course, if you want to really cut back, you cut people. But I, I don't want to do that, but you just start cutting back. I mean, you're cutting their allowance out, you know? They're going to start screaming. I'm just saying, get ready. They're gonna, they're gonna get you know, you know how it is. When somebody's against something, they'll say anything at all to get their point across. That's all I'm saying. I, I don't have a problem tightening up. I really don't have a problem tightening up, and especially overtime lines.
Me neither.
Um, overtime kills you. Uh, over, you know, labor cost, labor cost is already the biggest cost we got. And then overtime labor cost is even more. It eats you right up. I, I go along with that. Exactly what I just want to prepare you because they'll, they'll be calling you up, they'll be trying to catch you on the street, and they'll try to single us out one by one because if they can divide us. United you fall, united you stand.
Mr. Wilsey?
Um, I mean, I made many, many, um, you know, stances on this topic, and there's been questions, you know, when Commissioner Simmons, Fisher Simmons has said, well, how are we going to stop this? How, you know, we, we, we're going to spend money here. How are we going to stop this? Well, it's, it's like what we're talking about right now. We have to, we have to be aggressive. We have to be smart. We have to work together, being united. For us together, granted, we're not going to always get along on everything or agree on everything, but we have an opportunity right now to stand united, make some good, strong, consistent decisions, strong, consistent decisions with our budget. And we will, we will see improvements. You already heard what Tim said. We've got to change some things in accountability-wise, the way we enforce things. We have to look back the way things didn't work, and we have to change that, and that's up to us, and we can do that. Just have to work together on it, but we have to be consistent with our actions, and we can make this work. We can make a fluent budget. We can make it work. We've got all the means in order to make that work. We can do it, but we have to work together. We have to trust each other that we all are in this together for the best of the county. But going back to this negative cash flow, you guys, it's such a simple concept in any business. I don't care if you run a lawn maintenance company. If you're running a multi-billion dollar business. If you are in any area where you hit a negative cash flow at the end of the year, a negative cash flow. The first thing you should do to be fiscally responsible is say, what can we do right now to ensure we take every action possible to get out of this negative cash flow now? Not look at it as, well, this has been a twelve-year issue. Let's just put a Band-Aid on it and let it continue to be. We have an opportunity right now. Get rid of this negative cash flow. We strongly need to take this opportunity. We need to be strong, consistent with our actions as commissioners, as county administrator, as head of the clerks, head of the treasurer's office. And we can make this work. But we have to take advantage of this now, and we still are going to have a good chunk of money. We're going to get these numbers. I agree completely. On the top list, my, my number three was efficiency for the building. Utility costs are huge. But we still are going to have substantial amount of money to be able to spend on those very important topics. But we have to take advantage right now of getting rid of this negative cash flow. And us, we need to work together. We have to stay positive. It's not going to always be perfect, but we have to stay positive. We have to make strong decisions. And we are going to see some great improvements within this county.
Appreciate your opinion.
It's something that really struck me, uh, almost right out of the gate when we did our budget, uh, training two, three weeks ago, uh, and Rod Taylor was here and did that training. He was already somewhat familiar with the county, having worked with, uh, even prior to my arrival here, having worked with clerk and treasurer and doing some analytics for the board. Something he said really struck me about the cash solvency issue, and was framing this as just the foundation for where the county stands. Leading into budgeting, what all our departments should be thinking about. I like to look at us in comparison to other counties, not just our size, but other counties across the entire state. Just don't ever have the time to do that, to pull apart a budget, or rather, pull apart an audit and really look where we stand. And when we looked at our spending with our public safety spending and our general government and our courts, we were pretty much in line with uh, what most counties are doing, but when he talked about cash solvency right out of the gate. And compared us to the other counties, he put us into percentiles. And when you start talking percentiles, you're in the seventy-fifth percentile. You know, that's up here, you're doing pretty well. We were at the two and a half percent percentile. Are we at the bottom? I don't know, but there are only eighty-three counties in Michigan, so there's only one other county that's in that percentile. And I don't know if we're the one on the bottom or not, but I'm, I'm looking at that. I'm saying we definitely have to get that addressed. Um, Rod was able to, I think, explain that in the few minutes that he had to dwell on it. Uh, just in terms of the short-term measure that the cash solvency issue is versus the long-term, when we start talking budgeting. Start talking about some of these capital improvements that we want to do into the future. This is a short-term issue. What Karen said is exactly right. We can only look at this at the end of the budget year. That's when the snapshot's taken. That's when we have all the taxes that have come in in July and in December and have all of it in front of us and can say, okay, did we at least break even? The, um, uh, journal entry that they're doing each year right now is not to get us to positive cash. That's to get us to zero. It's, it's not any, any kind of a cushion at all. So, you know, that tells me that we're, we're teetering, we're on the tight rope. And, you know, a- anything, uh, major unplanned that comes along could really uh, major unplanned that comes along could really, really throw us for a loop. Um, we deal with it if it happened, but it would definitely be ugly. This is an opportunity to, uh, uh, you know, at least put us on some even footing uh, moving forward. Um, you know, what we've done with the, um, uh, budget work and dedicating ARPA money to the budget each year, I think it probably won't be this year, but in the twenty five budget, when we do it, you're really going to see, uh, the effect of that. We're not going to be drawing down on the tax revolving fund anymore. We said we wouldn't do that. That won't be used to balance our operating expenses. If you use it, hopefully it's dedicated to a project. We're going to do X, we're going to pave a parking lot, we're going to do whatever it might be. It's not a long-term commitment, it's a one-time shot if we do that. I'm not sure that surplus is going to be there much longer, given the direction that some of these, uh, court cases are going. That's a bigger question. But again, having Rod come in and just point that out right out of the gate, no prompting from anybody. This is just the general analysis he was doing for all the counties and all the clients that they have. And to point that out, two and a half percent, two and a half percent out, I think we can do better.
I, I mean, I think we need to look at the score sheet that we all, or that the commissioners that did do in, in the, the top five. Um, here, the, the negative cash flow is, is number four, it's definitely in the top five before I, in, in my opinion, and then I'll ask each one of you guys before we make a decision on this. I would like to know as far as how much it's going to cost for the, and, and, you know, maybe there's going to be funds, maybe i- if we break the top five down as how much each one of these are going to cost, then we can make a determination from there is, is how much we're going to contribute and where and what, a better idea of, of, uh, how much each one of these are going to cost.
What's, right, pardon me? What, what's eliminate? The, number, number three, right?
Correction facility body scanner, we weren't.
Commissary to pay for that. And now we're talking four items.
Did we find out, I'm sorry?
We don't.
Wait, that's what I was going to ask. It was, thanks, Commissioner Scott, I was going to ask next as far as if we found out for sure whether or not that, those fundings could be used.
I, I would love to sit up here and debate our counsel as to whether or not that that was something that could be used, but when they tell us we don't think so, that's a huge red flag to me. Um, they are, uh, when, uh, Mac did its workshops on using the opioid money, they continued to just continue to pound, ask your legal counsel. They're the ones that are going to have to defend you. And if our counsel is telling us, no, don't use it. Yeah, while I may not agree with their.
Was it definitive? No, it wasn't definitive? No? Okay, I was, wasn't aware of that.
It was a defendant, no? Well, I want explanation on that.
I will send you the narrative that they wrote up.
So I agree with the top, Lisa Topps, or let's.
They're with you. I, I see it in there. I mean, I'm, I'm reading words that say, you know, anything that's going to prevent, you know, somebody from overdosing, you can use it for.
I just added more of this. So that's, that's our legal counsel telling us, no. Our legal counsel isn't what's saying they're absolutely right all the time. I mean, I really want to question this. Because I really think that opioid money should spend that. And is there a way that we can possibly write our stance, our position, why we feel that it should be used and send it somewhere else? Again, it's a great opportunity. It's opioid funding. I just don't understand why we're having this issue.
There is a group that Mac has put together and the clerk sent me an email today as a bit of a reminder that we can participate in as members of Mac, uh, of people who, this is what they're doing. They're, they're advising communities about how to use the opioid dollars. I'd like to put it in front of that group and let's see what they have to say about it. And I'll make my, my case. Um, I don't have any problem sharing what the attorney said too, so they've got, you know, both of the arguments, but I'm telling you, I'm reading it. It's, it's toward the bottom of that appendix E. I'm reading it in there and I see it. And their, their concern is, well, it says, uh, in a clinical setting, and this isn't a clinical setting. Well, but we've also got an awful lot of discussion in here about law enforcement and first responders and, uh, you know, their participation in, you know, corrections that are grouped in with law enforcement. Uh, and, you know, the whole preventative component of it, I'm getting off topic a little bit, but the whole preventative component is there. If we find it before it gets in and can harm somebody, we prevented, you know, potential overdose or.
There's, there's still a potential, there's still a potential, they'll change.
Right. So for right now, I would like, do you guys agree, let's remove that from, from the top five? So we, we have four here and obviously number one, uh, with a two point four percent score, county building energy efficiency improvements. Um, I, I think if we break these top, the other three down to cost, um, keep negative cash offset in there. I mean, I, I think we'll be able to make a better decision as far as how much, how much these top four will, will cost. Um, there's a reason we did these scores. They're here, they're in front of us. Um, I think we heard everybody's opinion loud and clear.
What is this of four or five? Is it a five?
Three.
Three.
Three? It's a three?
Yeah.
No, 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 I don't mean the scoring. I mean, how many reports were sent in? Four, four, okay.
Who, who, who were given the, the surveys to take to send back to you?
Just.
Okay.
I did mine, I was late, but I did it. All right, Kelly? Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I think, again, I think we heard everybody's opinion. There's no urgency to this, but I, I think that, I think we need a better analysis of these costs. Um, I would like a better analysis of these costs and, and that way we can make more informed decisions. Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, I understand what, um, Mr. Wilson was saying about, you know, United Board of Commissioners stuff. And I'm not so concerned about the Board of Commissioners, I'm concerned about the others. Are they going to be unified with us? And, and I have a tendency to think probably not.
Yeah, probably.
Cross that bridge when we come, but everybody also has a right to their opinion.
No, and, and I, no, I'm just saying, I just, you know, that's, that's my concern.
Right.
I'm concerned about the other part. I'm not concerned about us. I'm concerned about the others that are spending money.
Right.
Are they going to be united with us? I ju- I just, I personally don't, don't see that.
Oh, I don't either. And I think that's why I'm saying they're, they're going to come running up to us and they're.
But this conversation doesn't help that.
No.
At all.
We got to realize, we got to realize going in that this is going to happen. Um, when you talk about a department, that's just their domain, that's.
Well, that's their job.
Most people, yes, but most people don't look at the big picture. And we're the big picture. You're right, you're right, because we've got one department. And it's not going to be the departments down this, down the hallway here, because they got so a little bit of money that, that it covers their wages and things like that. You, you're talking thirty five hour people already, you know? It's going to be, it's going to be the department's got bigger budgets that are going to get hit.
I'm going to disagree with what you say. I think we get a little picture, it, their job is, is the bigger picture in their department. They know what they do. Right.
Right. Our picture is all the departments.
A little piece of each department, a number.
Right, right. It is, it is. And how do we make a little number? Now, if you were, now, when Mr. Taylor was here, he talked about how to do that. And he, he warned and said, don't get hung up on saying we're cutting a percentage across the board.
No, you can't.
Because a percentage, uh, at a small office with three people is, is, is one number. And, but a percentage with twenty people, that's a heck of a number. And, and to cut it like that, you gotta go in surgically do it. You gotta take a look at every department, look at spending, look at what they spend on and everything else. And then when you say that though, a lot of these improvements we can do with money, we can do a lot of the improvements, say like, just take the Angel Clear, Clean Air thing. We got some money that we can contribute from the budget into that. ARPA doesn't have to pay the whole dollar bill. You know, we got the tax revolving fund, that's what it was built for, for capital expenses. These are capital expenses. So we can use other dollars to supplement ARPA dollars. You don't have to just take this number right here and say, we're only going to do the project with ARPA money, that's it. Where, and if we don't spend the ARPA money on it, we won't do it.
We got lots, lots of projects out here.
Yes, we do, but you're right. From, from number six and below, we already, we already have plans for servers, for computers, we got plans for all that in, in place. Um, and then the back page, a lot of, well, last half of the back page is basically outside the county. You know?
Yeah.
Do you guys agree as far as where we're at right now, getting, getting cost analysis on the, on this, on the energy efficiency, the U V clean air and the county building industry?
Absolutely.
By looking at these scores, we did these for a reason. This is what we feel is priority as a whole.
Yes.
Um, and then, and then reconvene after that.
Absolutely.
Tim, do you have questions?
We have no idea what these figures.
None. Maybe there will be money left over for the negative cash flow and, and, and then we'll talk about that. I mean, we don't know, we truly don't know.
We did receive an energy efficiency grant about a year and a half ago. Uh, or actually did fully pay for a new air handler in the sheriff's building across, and it was a, about a quarter million dollar project by itself. So once we have an idea of what this entails, what do we mean by energy improvements? Uh, we've got an opportunity then to search for some of those grants, maybe offset some of those costs as well. So I think this is key is to get that that menu, if you will, of our shopping list of things we need to do, and we can maybe use this to leverage some other monies from.
So we're counting on you to get these figures for us.
Well, yeah.
County Controller.
Perfect.
Can I?
County Controller. Yep.
Somebody else.
So, so go along with what Tim said, and, you know, we, we always, it seems like we're always talking a couple of times a month about the importance of grants and everything. So I think I'm totally on agreeance with, with what you brought up, and I think we all are, is we need to find out what these costs are going to be, you know? And we need to, to find these costs off sooner than later, you know? I've seen a real struggle and I've been working with Tim is for some other items that I've been trying to get going on, sending, trying to get some numbers and things like, for example, for transit. And it just seems like, you know, things aren't getting where they need to be. And I know Tim's working on, on some of that stuff, but we have to figure out a better way to be able to, if we have something we're looking into and we want to get a cost to it, it shouldn't be as hard as it is right now to get these costs. It shouldn't be that hard. So I know Tim's working on that, but we need to have uh, someone, someone that's already in our circle. Uh, s- some, we need more accountability when it comes to these things, because I mean, I've been here for six months and we're still, you know, like for the sheriff department, we still didn't have an idea what it's going to cost to fix the facial over there. You know, I mean, I talk about it two, three times a month. So, and I know you're working on it, Tim, but we really need to, to figure out how we're going to moving forward, because these are always going to be things, we're going to need capital improvements, how we're going to have a person or a group of people. I wouldn't even mind if there's a committee that, you know, could, you could have a couple of quarterbacks off that committee, that would be okay. I'm going to work on this estimate with these contractors or have you. But we have to have a better system in place because we are spinning our wheels a lot on a lot of this stuff and the, the wheels need to quit spinning because we just need to figure out how to fix it and then start going that direction. Um, and then just one more thing to comment on what Brenda said and, and Commissioner Scott, and you guys are definitely way more pessimistic than I am when it comes to, you know, what I'm talking about, how we need to be strong and consistent and united on our budget. But what we need to do is every single person that controls a budget, they need to come down here, sit in front of us, and they need to know that things are different. This is a different, this is a different group of people, this is a different county, this is a different way this county is going to be run. And they each need to know that we are watching everything that they do and they, and they need to be held more accountable for that. And that is going to help greatly. And we especially know those departments that you are worried about, that you're more, you know, pessimistic about, and same to you, the ones they have problems on. Those people, we really are going to sit down and it can be very positive talks, but they're going to know things are different. We're moving forward in a different way, things are going to change.
I agree.
Right.
There's.
What I find help move forward, moving forward is, is placing stuff on the committee of the whole. We need more now than, than we've ever met, and our meetings are, are pretty extensive. I mean, as far as period of time, um, is, is continuing to putting them on the committee of the whole. That way they're, they're not dropped off, they're not forgot about. Um, I, I find that to be the most accurate, um, efficient way. I, I don't know how else to versus one-on-one communication, but then the rest of us, you know, are, are not, not aware of the same information.
Yeah.
Um, but I agree with, I agree with what you're stating there as far as things, if, if you don't continue to follow up, it seems like they're forgotten.
Brenda?
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, Brenda, were you one when it was a seven-person board?
Yes.
No.
Oh, you weren't?
No.
I thought you were, I'm sorry.
Karen, I was the first that was on the five-person board.
Yeah. Karen can tell you, I've talked to Bev Scott, I know you have too. Bev Scott was head of the finance committee. And back then, it wasn't just two commissioners. There was three commissioners in a committee. And Bev Scott, she would hold, like the judges, she'd hold the judges' feet right to the fire. She'd have Noble right down there and say, look, we need to cut some money out of your thing. When I got here, they said, don't, don't cut, don't talk to the judges, the judges will sue you.
Judge didn't sue me and I.
Right.
Been in the corner.
But we got to get back to it. This is a culture shift.
I, I think part of my job to find difficult is to keep us on task too. I mean, to keep, that way we, we continue to address subject areas, because we do a lot of times get off task.
Well, it is.
Talk about past and I don't find, I, I don't disagree with the Commissioner Scott, but, but, but I think that what you're stating is also, you want to use your terminology pessimistic. I mean, going back to, I don't disagree with you of how things used to be, but I, I don't think that.
I want to see a culture shift.
I don't think that helps with the topic moving forward.
I've been here.
Well, what, what I think he's saying, and I, I understand you're saying, uh, Commissioner David, but main thing is, and you guys hear me say this many times, and you do have to do this with any businesses, when you don't have something operating right, you do have to look back and sometimes you have to look back numerous times and talk about numerous things that didn't go right. What was wrong? Was it management issues? Was it, you know, equipment was, were we overspending for, for items when we didn't need to spend that? But we have to talk about those things it, to move forward.
But remember.
How, how we're going to be able to fix them correctly.
Yes and no, but remember, our only control we have is the budget. That's it. So you have to be very cautious also not to, to micromanage, which is their job.
No, I'm not talking about any of them.
That may be, the problem, one of the big problems we have is the culture here in the county is that the budget's just a, something that the commissioners work on and I don't have to worry about it. I don't have to look at it. The only department we got it coming in here is, is Judge Williams. And when they want to do an adjustment, they come in and talk to us. Now, we're educating the sheriff's office more and more about a budget. And, and they're learning more. But there's so many departments, well, it was just like the transit, missed a millage. Why? Well, in every other county, the department head announces that he needs a, this millage renewal. Not in Oldama, oh, somebody else took care of it. Well, it was the guy that sat over there in that office took care of it, the puppet master, okay? He took care of it.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, I'll take care of this.
And he didn't worry about it.
And who, who compiled all the budget numbers together, right? The guy over there. Well, you did, you did, but I mean.
And put it into together.
Right, but I mean, if, if, if he thought that somebody was over budget, he would have went down there and said, hey, we got to do something with that.
No, we didn't.
Well, I don't think he did either. He did not.
I got just a second. Do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Extremely helpful for me that we can focus on, you know, getting this, this one project costed out. So I think it was, for me, productive meeting.
Or I think productive, yeah.
Um, and, and I, um, I do agree with Commissioner Scott about a cultural change. The, the mindset has got to be a lot different with, with all the departments. Some departments are, are really good, they're, they save a dime wherever they can. And there's some departments that just think that the trough's never going to go dry. And, um, but how do we make them accountable? I mean, let's say they go ahead and spend, and now we, we're stuck with a bill like that.
I think it helps with, with Tim being in the position that he's in. Tim, are we, is, are we how far off? Are you okay discussing all of this? I mean, as far as where we're headed, I, I know this was a special meeting about ARPA funds and now we're, okay, go ahead.
Discussing.
So, but when, yeah.
She asked about accountability and budgeting.
Um, I think we're on the right track. And when you had all of your departments represented at that meeting on the twelfth, to go over just basic budgeting in that training, uh, says, I think we've got a level of commitment here that's going to help the entire organization. And that theme was, I think, struck, uh, throughout the meeting was, yes, you have your piece of this budget that you need to work on, but you need to be aware of what the entire picture looks like. That's exactly where the conversation started. Uh, he looked at the overall, uh, talk ebbs and flows. I mean, what, some like twenty years of showing us these years you had surplus, these years you were negative, and it just, you know, that's so unusual, but to actually see that graphed out, I think that drives the point home to everybody. Says this is an organization, you know, we need to be working more in tune with one another. Uh, yes, the sheriff has a large part of the budget, but, uh, you know, the, the housing program is just as important in the county. And I think that was a, you know, a, a very good. And I think that was a, you know, a, a very good, uh, presentation for that, but I think we've got the commitment from the departments to do it. They wanna do it. My job in part is to help show how. And, and that's where I think we started. And I think that's exactly the tone, uh, that was set. So I think you're gonna see this culture shift. I think it's already on its way.
Do you think thirty days, we, we convene with thirty days? You think thirty days gives you enough time to come up with, with these figures of these, these three topics that are on here?
I'm hostage to what we get from consumers right now. Um, and I, I have no idea how long that's gonna take them, but I can tell you that the reports that I've seen them do, and it was done for two of the counties where I've worked, very comprehensive. Um, you're probably gonna be stunned at the number, you know, why don't we just build a whole new building instead of doing this? Uh, but it's not something that they're, they'll even tell you, this isn't something that you're gonna do all at once. We'll knock some things off with the funding that we have. But these are long-term commitments and you're gonna see savings in energy. I don't know how big it'll be, but just, you know, doing the LED lighting, you're gonna see savings. Got dated boilers in here. And yes, those will be a, a big ticket item if we're gonna replace them, but the energy savings alone, over a hundred thousand dollars a year, just in utilities on this building. So can we whittle away at that? I've gotta think we can. But that's where we need the expertise is for them to come in and tell us, then they can prioritize.
So are you guys okay reconvening in, in thirty days? Want to have a more thorough, thorough, uh, list?
I've got one more question.
Go ahead.
So, so we know the importance and it goes back. I'm not gonna try to get too in-depth with this, but I can talk strongly about it because I have a construction background. So I talked how important it is for us to find someone or a system in place to be able to get estimates on anything that we do within the county. So right now, Tim, we know the importance of, of these items. These are construction items. Who is gonna be the project manager, the leader, the coordinator to reach out to local contractors, contractors outside to be able to contact them, to be able to show them what we need and be able to keep things in order? Because one thing we cannot have is have a project manager, a coordinator that's naive. Naive coordinators, project managers, what happens? Project costs are increased. It's a bottom line. That's just part of the game. So it's extremely important that this person, whoever it's gonna be, is not naive, understands what the project is, is able to take that understanding to the contractor. The contractor is gonna be able to tell this person understands it. And they're gonna be more proactive to give us a fair number and a number that's gonna come in a lot quicker than, well, we'll get to it and we're gonna get to it in two months. So it's really important, who is gonna be our quarterback?
So depending on what the, you know, what we're doing here, and the larger projects, you literally hire people typically to do that. So if we have a construction project, for instance, we were putting up a jail, we would have somebody doing exactly that and keeping the contract.
But they, these aren't, these are not large, large.
But maybe, maybe the aggregate of all of them, if we're gonna do a huge energy efficiency project for this building, it would be worth dedicating ten percent of that budget to having that expertise available to us. This isn't somebody that needs to be here, you know, ten hours a day. This is somebody that just needs to oversee the contractors, making sure the bid specs are right. Coming back in and making sure what's being done is as.
Can our, a general contractor.
Yeah, yeah.
Can our building inspector in, in, uh, the, who's the other one over there? Mr. Huey? Is it Mr. Huey?
Yeah, building in, you know, they're.
They do this? Isn't this part of our?
Well, they're, you know, they've got a fine line to walk too, because they have to, uh, inspect it. Making sure it's all up to code. So if they're, you know, coordinating it, now they're, they're not gonna be objective anymore. But they can't help in some instances and they have.
Uh, but if you have a quarterback, I mean, that quarterback may not even work for the county.
Absolutely.
Cause I don't, we have the expertise.
Probably.
Here, they can, they can even do that. And, uh, and I am concerned about that, uh, negative cash flow. But I'm also concerned about if, if we don't get that spending under control, it's like throwing money at the negative cash flow and they'll fly here. There we are again, because we didn't all come together as a good block of people to do what's right as a, as, um, coordinating with each other. But, um, do you have department head meetings, Mr. Phil Haney?
Once a month.
Once a month. So I challenge this, as our controller, I expect to see results on that change of attitude with all these department heads and what's going on right now. That's your job. That's why we hired you.
Direction is that change gonna go?
Commissioner, I don't.
So much money.
Commissioner Wolsey, I don't think you really got your question answered. I mean, did you? Are you okay with your, your?
Well, I mean, it sounds, well, I know Tim right away said, you know, he was talking more like to Gerald, though that's a large project. Some of this stuff is not that big a project. So I mean, but if you bundle it together and if we have a general contractor that is gonna work for us for the best interests of the county, I don't know about ten percent, but, um, I think that's a, a good way to go. But, you know, I really think that we need to make sure that that person that we picked, you know, it, it is that right person. Um, I think that probably is, is the best option to go.
I just wanted to verify that you got your question.
I appreciate that.
Would it be, would it be a, since your, your background, what do you think? Offer somebody twenty grand to to handle the project, ten grand?
We have no idea.
So, I, well, I'm, I'm just throwing a number out here because I'm thinking, let's post the job, let's advertise the job.
Yeah, but, but you need this number before you can really talk that number. Um, because if we're, we don't, well, we could easily overpay there too.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, Simmons.
When, when you talk about the same person to be the quarterback all the time, I don't think the same person can be the quarterback all the time. Because the person that got the expertise in this area may not have any expertise in this area. So you'd have to get a different quarterback over here. Where's the quarterback you had over here? But I mean, you gotta make sure you've got the person that has the expertise that knows what they're doing. And usually that's not the same person all the time. Just, just a thought. Knowing some, some, what some contractors have gone through and, uh,
If we're.
They didn't know anything about this.
If we're built, if we're gonna build another county building, we would hire one person to be the quarterback.
Exactly.
Of everything. And, and that person would find the expertise along the way.
Yeah, they find the plumbers. HVAC and so you do have.
When they did the jail, they had Mr. Allen up here to it, did an excellent job. And he got.
I don't disagree with you, but what like Commissioner Wolsey said, this is not, you know, some of these obviously are, are not that large a projects. Um.
Think you're gonna spend an easy quarter of a million. We spent a quarter million across the street in a little building like that.
We're gonna see, I, I, we, we can't make educated decisions in my opinion, so we have better fact, figures on these. So I, Tim, do you need any further direction from us?
I don't.
Okay.
I do anyway.
Perfect. We're gonna reconvene in, in a month, special meeting with a, uh, to further discuss this.
Okay.
We spent two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Public comment. Are, are you, you guys good with where we're at?
Um, not to get all over, but it is an important thing, like back to the correctional, the scanner. So you're gonna contact that, that option that you talked about, uh, and that.
Is there any public comment in the room? Um, I, I didn't today, but nobody knows their schedule. Is there five Thursdays in July?
No.
It shouldn't be.
August. Well, there's only four. Five in August. Uh, the next, the committee's holes is the sixth and twentieth, and the regular meetings at thirteenth and twenty-fourth.
Or in August, we have five more.
Five.
Thursdays.
There's five in.
In August, we have five more Thursdays. We only meet the first, second, third and fourth. Like this month.
Before we get too far out, um.
We gotta do the budget.
That, when's Fair Week?
The third weekend, August.
You got.
What's one for our county?
I know, I know.
No, I will not be here that Thursday, the, the, that night.
By Thursday, you wanna skip the Thursday?
It's all coming together.
August.
How about we just pick another day towards the end of July? An evening, I can do any, any evening, guys.
Let's do a special meeting in July. Sounds good.
Yeah.
We wanna set it right now.
Yep.
Well.
We did one of these, um, on a Friday morning, like at ten.
Be fine.
To work. And I'm looking at the twenty-eighth. I mean, just sitting there with absolutely nothing on it on my.
I have, I have Michigan Works at ten thirty. So we could either do it at nine earlier, or I'm out of, I'm out of, uh, Michigan Works by noon or afternoon, ten thirty to noon the last Friday of every.
We do it a day.
The twenty-eighth. Yep, I don't.
On the twenty, on the twenty eighth.
Yep.
Twenty eighth at ten thirty?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty. I'd say eight thirty, cause if you have, I leave and go to another meeting, I think we need it.
I got Michigan.
We have plenty of time.
That work?
Yeah, oh, that works fine.
Okay, that's July twenty-eighth.
Okay, uh, public comment.
Eight thirty?
Yes, AM.
Eight thirty. Thank you.
Unless something happens and we can't, are unable to put all of these figures together, or at least some of them.
Hopefully we'll have hands for customers.
Yep. Yes.
Thank you for your time today in giving this negative cash some consideration. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Um, any public comment on the phone? I will not be at the meeting next Thursday. Um, I will be out of town. I will try to join by Zoom.
You'll be out of town?
I'll be out of town, uh, this, I mean, Thursday.
Uh, like to wish Kelly a happy birthday.
Today? Today's a big day. You can tell us how many?
Thirty-one.
Good for you.
Whoa, thirty-one.
So the six is, the next is a committee of the whole, yes, Commissioner Simmons, I will not be here, so you'll be in that meeting.
Which meeting?
Next Thursday, the sixth.
That's another seal.
Yeah, committee of the whole.
Yes, um, July sixth.
Yes.
Well, you're asking a lot. I gotta do claims. I'm a meeting too. I mean.
You don't have to do claims next week. It's a family week.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Are you guys good with that?
A second.
Six fifty, one. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Close motion carries.
Hey, Tim, I wanna go to the best.